Good evening. This is Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three, meeting of the Town of Berlin Planning Board. As a preliminary matter, please note that this meeting is being recorded and some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you swatting of spiders in the middle of your forehead. Or anything else you intend to or not screen share on your computer. Anything you broadcast will be captured and recorded forever and ever and ever. And possibly wind up as a TikTok video to be shared amongst your neighbors and friends. This is Tom Sanford, Chairman of the Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that members of the Planning Board. Are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order. Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Jay Teach.
Here.
Timothy Wheeler.
Yeah.
Carolyn McDonald.
Yeah.
Uh, Tom Andrews not here. Uh, anticipated speakers on the agenda. We'll get to you in a minute. With a quorum of the board present, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty-five P M. Tuesday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-three. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts due to the outbreak of COVID nineteen virus. Specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public can be found on the Town of Berlin website. Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly. Accessible physical location and allows us encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board, Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda. Which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After their concluding remarks, I will invite each board member by name to provide comments. Questions, penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold your insights until your name is called. Board members and speakers on the agenda, please remember to mute your telephone or computer when you're not speaking. Speak clearly. To ensure the accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait until you yielded the floor. State your name before speaking. If a board member wishes to engage in conversation with one another. Please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the meeting from our last meeting.
I move that we accept the minutes of June twenty-seventh.
I second that.
Okay, we have a me, um, a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any corrections? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Jay Teach.
Hi.
Timothy Wheeler.
Hi.
Carolyn McDonald.
Hi.
And Tom Sanford, I. Motion carries unanimously to accept the minutes of the meeting. Thank you. Any other, uh, mail or? Paperwork business we need to attend to?
I have a bill.
Okay. Is there any mail that we need to attend to first? No, okay.
Well, I didn't get these mail, I hmm, maybe a week behind, but. No, uh, nothing of email.
Okay. Is this?
Procopio guys. Um, I keep asking them when they want to come and they're.
They're dodgy.
Dodgy. But Dick Your Hoffman, who is going to be here with his candidate.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna do that in a few minutes. So this, uh, bill is, Tim, is this a? F Y I twenty twenty-five, or is this a? What is this? Are we, we behind, in other words?
This is dated seven eleven twenty-three.
Oh, perfect, okay.
This is for, um, Assavet Housing Consortium.
We paid something recently for that, a month ago.
Yeah, I think we paid the third quarter.
Okay.
Um, cause it had been bounced around, but this is the fourth quarter. Uh. And we pay that out of Eloise's money, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Eloise. I moved that we pay. Huh?
She's here.
I know, that's why I thanked her. Um. I moved that we pay eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents to. Um, cover the cost of our quarterly membership in the Assavet Regional Housing Consortium.
I will second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to create eight hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents for our fourth quarter dues to the Assavet. Regional Housing Consortium. Any question?
Fourth quarter of twenty-two, so it is.
Fourth quarter, twenty, fiscal year twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Yep.
Any other further questions? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. This time I'll go the other way. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, I. Motion carries unanimous to pay eight hundred and sixty dollars and fifty cents to Assavet Housing Consortium. Tim, do you have a warrant?
I'll put one together.
Okay.
And I'll get around to people. All right.
Yep.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, any other? Mail, business, penetrating insights, comments, questions?
I don't think so.
I got all business I'll report on later.
Okay. Yeah, we got a few minutes and then we'll, um, take up, actually, you could take it up now, well.
Well, it's quick.
Do you want your business first, or do you wanna do? All right, well, let's do, cause we have a candidate posted for a specific time, so let's do the old business if you want, real quick.
So. I spoke with, um, Carrie to see if Central Mass would be interested in helping us facilitate a rail trail forum. And she said that, that, that would be something they would be interested in, so. You know, we need to, after you guys have, whoever's gonna meet with Clinton, did we meet with Clinton?
No, Tom is working on scheduling that.
Yeah, so, I mean. That might inform a little bit about. What we wanna do, but Carrie's ready to chat with. Us, I mean, we, you know, you and Tom, after you meet with. Clinton, you know, you might. I think she talked about Delapena and. Probably someone from the consortium, may, maybe there's someone from the state, I don't know, you know. Who else would be good to have?
There is someone from the state, uh, the name's not gonna come to me now, Robin Berry.
Yeah, that makes, that sounds right. So I can ask Carrie to, if we thought that was someone we might wanna involve. Um. How full-blown do we want this first thing to be?
I think she needs to write a proposal or something, so we can at least reuse something.
Yeah. So we'll brainstorm a little and get something back to everybody. Maybe late September, early October, something like that.
Yeah.
Um. So that, that's what I do with that one. Then Liz from the mall, as. Someone said. Probably Peter said she was gonna be on vacation, huh? Yeah. Anyway, I emailed her and, and said, I'd like to talk to her and I understood she was going on vacation, but when she gets back, maybe we could sit down and. And see if she's got some ideas about language that they might wanna. Put forward as an opportunity for us to brainstorm a little, so we can get something to think about for the warrant for. The, of fall or early winter town meeting.
Okay.
So those are the two things I've been up to with that. That's all I have.
Okay, cool. Do you wanna, um, elevate Peter at this point?
I will.
And the mystery candidate?
Uh, well, I would have to know who that is.
Corinne. Corinne or Corinne?
Corinne Gustafson. I can do that.
Thank you. Everyone.
Hey, Peter.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Carolyn, is it quite the glasses?
Wait, thank you. Amazon, three for twelve dollars. Yeah, right?
Is, uh, Corinne elevated?
She is.
Corinne, you there?
I'm here, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Meet Corinne, she's capable of speaking for herself.
Yeah.
Corinne, tell, tell us, tell them something about yourself and how I. I, uh, reel you in.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, yeah, so Corinne Gustafson, um, I'm a project manager. I work at a cancer therapeutics biotech company. Um, I've lived in Berlin for nineteen years. I have two kids. They've been through the Berlin Boilston. School system, um, seventeen and twenty-one. So my twenty-one-year-old is in college and my seventeen-year-old just graduated from Toronto.
Okay.
Um, let's see what else. I have two dogs and a cat and, um, I decided that after nineteen years, I'd like to get a little more involved in, in the town. So, here I am.
Fantastic.
Excellent. We always like volunteers.
Yes.
So, I mean, if you have any questions for me, I'm not sure how this goes, so I'm new to this.
Yep, oh, that's fine. Um, basically, all it is, the, the, we're in charge of the. Planning Board's in charge of the appointees to Economic Development Committee. So Peter has tapped you and has promoted, or promoted you to us. So we need to have a formal, uh, vote and confirm your. Um, your, uh, membership onto his committee. So, is there any questions?
Corinne asked, Corinne asked how to prepare for the meeting, and I said, hold on later.
Yeah. I hope you didn't listen to him.
Is there any questions from any of the committee, or any of the, uh, planning board members?
Hmm, are you able to attend all, most of the meetings?
I'm sorry, my dogs are barking.
Are you to attend most of the meetings?
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Can I ask her how she feels about LED signs, Carolyn?
You can ask.
What I feel about what?
LED signs.
Don't, don't take the bait, don't take the bait.
Wise candidate.
Yeah. Jay's a troublemaker.
Uh, I'm happy to make a motion that we, um. Appoint, I guess, we have appointing authority, yeah.
Yep.
Corinne to Corinne, right? It's not Corinne, it's Corinne.
Um, it's, it's. Everybody says it differently. It's Corinne, according to my mother, but everybody in Massachusetts says Corinne, so I'm.
Well, uh, what your mother said is probably the accurate then, so Corinne, um, will, will. I move that we appoint you to the Economic Development Committee for a term to be determined by the town clerk's. Office, because they'll know what the appropriate length of time is for your sentence.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept Corinne, Corinne, uh, to, uh, the Economic Development Committee. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, I. Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Uh, yes, thank you.
Happy to be here.
Excellent, great.
Yes, some interesting challenges coming up with the mall.
Yeah.
Evaluation has dropped from three hundred million to fifty. Um.
From what to what?
Well, I just read, what did I say?
I think you said two hundred, two hundred million to thirty million.
Yeah, yeah, from.
Assess value?
Raised, the appraised value of the Solomon Pond Mall. Was cut to thirty point four million in March, from two hundred million in twenty-twelve. And the one in Dartmouth. A lot of these malls have, uh, kinda term debt that they have to refinance every five or ten years. And the one in Dartmouth is facing that with a big problem, cause their value is down and the interest rates are up. I think that may be common with ours also.
So with a mall like Solomon Pond. That's now. Getting close to its thirtieth year. What, that? That debt, what, what's your suspicion? I mean, does, does that debt really just get carried this long? Cause it go past thirty years? Does it just get rolled over and rolled over? What's going on?
I don't think they're thirty years. I think they're shorter than that.
It's five, between five and ten years.
Yeah, is it, yeah.
And then in five or ten years, you have to refinance or pay. And that just keeps on rolling, over and rolling, over and rolling, over.
Yeah.
And given what Jay said, that it's devalued and the interest rates are up, it's a double whammy.
Yeah.
Right. So the owners may have put more money in, you know, cause the bank won't lend as much. Or.
You know, but when, when this company that owns it now took over. Uh, uh, we're not assuming that they. They, they haven't been there since twelve.
No, they're, they're creditors, they're creditors, it's a creditors committee. They own it. The former owners gave them the keys.
Oh.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they were saying how.
They don't have to worry about refinancing their debt.
Well. The creditors don't have a hundred percent equity, I don't think. They care, they take the debt that the mall came with.
But after, after twenty-five years, how much debt would they be carrying, do you think?
Most of it.
Yeah.
Seventy percent, sixty percent, seventy-five percent.
Really?
Yeah, yeah, they just keep on rolling. It's not like residential debt.
But if they built it in ninety-four. It'd be interesting to know what the, I mean, what did they spend in ninety-four?
Well, even if they spent ten percent of what they might have been worth a couple of years ago, they're gonna, they're gonna leverage that debt.
Yeah.
Other people's money, other people's boats.
Right. Anyway, but I don't know if you, I, I reached out to Liz before she went on vacation and just said I'd. Be happy to chat with her when she gets back about zoning changes that might, and assist them in. Their endeavor to find tenants. Um, so if she sets up a time, I'll let you know on the E D C and we can join forces, you know?
Sure. Yeah, I saw her the night before she went away. Which was last Thursday.
Yeah, and, cause we, we really want them to feed us some thoughts about modifying language in the. In the overlay district, so that there's more latitude for them to bring in some of the potential tenants that. They perceive being possibilities, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't imagine they know themselves. Cause if they knew themselves, I don't imagine they know themselves, cause if they knew, they'd be approaching the town saying, guess what, we've got. Tenant X that would like to move in, but the zoning bylaw doesn't permit it.
Well, uh, clearly, the report from. The Metropolitan Area Planning Commission suggested housing. And when we had a housing forum, the, the people that attended the forum were receptive to that. And when we talked to Liz and her superior. They both put housing on their list as a high priority, so. If that was the only thing we accomplished in a modification, it would seem as though it would open the door to that avenue, so. Um, I'd like them at least to. Acknowledge that that's the direction they want us to go with. And if it isn't, just, you know, they can say, no, we're never gonna go there, but I, it seems like that would be foolhardy, given the, what's going on in other places. Um, so. I'll let you know.
Okay, good. Corinne, did you understand any of that? Is there anything you want me to fill you in on now or after offline?
Yeah, maybe later offline, you can.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ready. Thanks, guys and girls.
Good night.
Bye-bye.
Alrighty. So, we have. Continuing discussion of the sign bylaws. On our next agenda item.
Did everybody see the stuff I emailed today?
Uh, the first round, the second one I couldn't open.
Really?
Yeah.
The second one was the better one, too.
Yeah, it sent me to something on. Um, online.
Yeah.
Then, then the link that was online didn't work.
On there. Um, all right, I will try to resend it tomorrow, um, but basically it was.
Did you get it, Jay, could you open it?
Yeah, I don't know what, I don't remember whether it was a link or a PDF, but.
It, the second email had both.
Yeah. The first one I got, and I could open it. The second one, and it could be my firewall blocking it, too.
Could be. Um, but basically, it, um, you know, I was looking for some way to quantify. The light pollution that I am so concerned about with LED signs. And, um, I happened to hear something on the radio about, um, the Dark Skies Initiative. And went looking through that and the PDF that I attached was. Basically Dark Sky's best practices. Um, and it's, you know, it's, it's specifically about LED signs, actually. Um. And I know that, um, another place that I was reading today, they recommended. The light color be no more than three thousand Kelvin, which is, which is a warm.
Warm.
A, a very warm color. Um, and no more than fifty lumens.
Fifteen, one, five?
Five zero.
Five zero fifty, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that article you sent around talked about four or five different classifications. Of zones.
Yep.
Where, for example, in the middle of, you know, uh, nature preserve. Would be zone one, and the middle of a city would be zone five, and they had recommendations for nighttime. LED light, uh, luminance for those different five zones. Which makes a lot, so I mean, the, the first. Thing they note is that, um, the traditional methods of. Shielding, uh, nighttime light from going places you don't want it to go, so. Neighbors, the sky, cause it causes night glow and, uh. You know, is, is to, um, is to put baffles, I think, and. You know, and it's, you, you can't really, or have lights that are directional, I guess, and. It's hard to do that with LEDs, with the, these LED signs, they have a very wide angle of, um. Dispersion when they leave the LED. But what you can do is you can try to determine how much light to emit at different times of day, in the, in the, during the day, they have to be. You can have them get darker and darker as the. Need for brightness goes away.
Right, it was, it was centered around sunrise and sunset, like, it was either an hour before, an hour after sunset. And an hour before sunrise, I believe.
Yeah.
Um. And then, and I believe, I'm trying to remember what, what I sent and what I read. Um, but there were also recommendations about, um. You know, whether the sign should turn off altogether. After a certain time, um. So, I'm trying to not be obstructionist. I'm trying to be helpful and still achieve the same goal.
No, it's good. I'm glad you found that, and, and, um. Another thing it talks about is density, so how many signs do you have in a particular, uh, area? Again, with the classifications involved, like, you could maybe have a lot of them, uh. City where there's already a ton of light being emitted, but. The center of Berlin, we probably wouldn't want to have five LED signs all running at the same time.
Right.
At night, yeah.
I bet you that would be tricky language, though. Cause if you're a, a business, or if you're, uh. Uh, you know, a not-for-profit, and you wanted to have an LED sign. And you were geographically located to get next somebody, and you had a different use, and you could prove all kinds of different things. Why couldn't you, what, what would, is it first up, best dressed, or how do you go about? You know, slicing that avocado up so that everybody gets a share?
Yeah. Right. Your licenses. Hmm.
Okay.
Tell them.
Yeah. Yeah, but, well, and I think it's, it is helpful to have some guidelines. Um, you know, there is legislation at the State House. Um, that also, you know, someday will pass, I. From the further reading I did after I sent that first email, it. Seems like, um. They've been trying for quite some time to get this legislation passed, passed, and it just kinda languishes in committees and.
Um, is it, this is about, um.
Adopting the dark sky policies for the state, yeah. And more and more states are doing it, you know, it, it will happen in Massachusetts eventually, but, um, how long? You know, so if we use those kind of guidelines. Um, at least we're basing. Our, our decision-making off of science and best practices.
Yep.
Instead of just throwing a dart. And, and following guidelines that eventually, hopefully, will be adopted by the state, so we'll already be in line with that.
That's good, yeah.
And it will make my heart happy.
So did you guys fill out your worksheet?
You did.
Wanna hand them in?
Here you go. Slide it across the table.
You wanna try to work through some of this and see, I mean.
Sure.
Let's get a discussion started.
How do you wanna go about it?
Uh, we could show my screen, I guess I could put it up. This particular screen is good, let's try it and see. All right, once again, I can't find the button.
Move your mouse. And the green screen share button should show up on the bottom. Of the screen.
Hope it's wide enough. Always use that to read.
Oh, yeah.
Hmm, can you zoom in a little on it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's better.
So my re, original interest was in town and school. I think we talked the other day. But. Yeah, we'd have some more. Classes.
So why do we need all of the classes? Why do we need to differentiate between municipal town and municipal schools?
Um, maybe we don't.
The same with the churches and the not, not, nonprofit.
Exactly what I did. I put those, both of those together, the municipal stuff and the nonprofit stuff.
Okay.
I agree. That's what I did.
Well, you were outriding the tractor this afternoon.
Is there any? Looking, I, I remember looking at this and I, I didn't check boxes, but that was what I was thinking as well, so.
So, a quick question for you, Tim, is, is the language in the right to farming? They have language about signage and things like that, do they get a special?
No, I don't, I don't believe we've got it, I don't think there's anything in there. It just, basically, it says we're a right to farm town and that we're, we're not gonna, the, the normal routine practices of agriculture, which. Tend to be more noise and, you know. Oper- hours of operation and spraying and those types of things will be um, understood as, as necessary, um. So, you know, go with the flow is the notion, now, so, I don't think they ever went into. I don't recall anything that would be as specific as, you know, farmers ought to have the right to have more signage or. Larger signage or signage in places that wouldn't ordinarily take, you know. Take place, so.
Okay. But even like, um, you know, uh, different products or different produce as the seasons change or whatever?
You know, it. If we think about the farms in town. Um. Golden skip has certainly taken advantage of the off-premise sign.
Right.
Usage. And utilized it effectively, I think, I mean, they've got their couple spots where they've got them and they're. They're allowed, you know, so. Um.
So that works.
And, and they're not, I mean, he makes those signs the size they're supposed to be, and it does the job. Um. I know in our case, the. I forget what exact, I, I don't, I don't know if I got twelve square feet or ten square feet, but. It may be twelve, I. There's times when I think, it, I add an extra sign that probably. Two and a half feet long and six inches high, and it's. You know, probably over the, the limit, but um. Generally speaking, we can live within the confines of the sign bylaw.
Okay.
So if you add seasonal signs, are those considered temporary? The additional ones?
Oh, see, I would say no. Because they're, the temporary ones. Ought to have a, a shelf life that's less than a seasonal sign for. Yeah, there, there may be season.
We, we had, when we would, we did this with Ron, um, when, when he was on the board. And we talked about it in reference to political science.
Right.
And, and we did that uh with a shelf life, for that very reason, because there was stuff that was being left on people's properties out.
Right, and then the Attorney General's Office said. Um. Freedom of speech doesn't allow us to put a limit on a political sign.
Hmm.
Oh.
Are we gonna have a special category for political?
Well, we can't, it sounds like, as, as far as limiting.
We've got Eloise in the office and the audience, she may remember what exactly the Attorney General's Office said in regard to that, but they, I did, I remember they did warn us.
Let's see. Yes, oh, hold on. Eloise, I think you can talk.
Thank you, thank you. I believe they just said you couldn't put on any limits much as you do for um. You know, a, a sale coming up. You know, if you have yard sales and stuff.
I think we said, we, we tried to limit it like ten days after the election, they had to be removed or something like that, and. I think that's what we ran a follow-up.
But I think you would, I will have to double check, but I think they said. If you just put it in for yard sales, whatever else, any other temporary that it has to be removed within ten days of the event. You might be okay, but. That was many years ago.
Yeah, I know.
Right, so don't call out political signs specifically, just lump them all together.
I believe so.
And then let somebody take you to court.
Right?
I wanted to get an estimate. Of our, of our thinking, our kind of expectation about how many. Signs of each category that we touched, just to keep, there would be. Like. Municipal signs. How many would you expect that we would have municipal in school?
Well, you could, you could go, you could do town offices, you could do the highway department, you could do, you know, you could go, anything that touches municipal. Right? How are anything that, that, you know, the town owned state land, I sound on land.
Right, town owned land, you could, you could do the tennis courts, now that that's something to show off.
Because I'm thinking we'd have one at the school and one in the center. And I'm not sure whether we would have any others.
But you're talking about LED now?
Um, well, we're gonna define that.
Are you talking just any, any type of?
General sign, you got, you got, you got the highway department has a sign.
Yep. The town offices, transfer station.
Yeah, that's true.
And like I said, I'll be surprised if there's not some sort of sign. At the tennis courts, even if it's just what the rules are.
Well, I mean, in the, in the, in the Community Preservation Act Committee is talking about signage that would be erected. Um, temporarily as a project is constructed, indicating that CPA money is being utilized, and then. Perhaps a, a plaque or sign of some sort. On property like um, the horseshoe pond piece, uh, or. You know, the tennis courts might have something that would say, you know, paid for with C, you know, your CPA dollars, that sort of thing, so. Um. And those will be permanent signs that we're. Thinking about now.
Right, and, and the state actually encourages that.
Yeah.
For CPA projects.
But then we get back to the municipal use question about. Um. Isn't it exempt, and this is, I mean, Lynn may want to chime in about this, but the.
Well, let's get everybody in here.
Oh, yeah, what the hell. Why keep her sitting out in the cold? Um, but. Should, should a municipality? Claim an exemption from a town bylaw? You know, under what circumstances should a municipality claim an exemption from a town bylaw? I guess that's the problem, and I have a, I guess my sense is. The town ought to abide by the bylaws that. Other citizens have to live with. Uh, under almost all circumstances, and there may be some extraordinary situations where you'd say. You know, this, it, it just is not appropriate for the town to have to live within this confine, but generally, it seems like the town ought to abide by the same rules that the citizens do. Um, so. So if.
In this case, that's, that's hard, because. I think if you hold our residents who we are supposed to be representing. Think you're gonna find that there's. Uh, significant interest in a small number of municipal signs that talk about. Municipal things, events, and. Dangers and whatever, and there's not a lot of interest in all of a sudden allowing all the commercial businesses and churches and nonprofits to put them up. So if we were to, if our goal is to try to write a by, bylaw that represents the will of the. Voters, I think we're gonna have to separate municipal from other.
Yeah, and that, that may not be as big a leap from what I'm saying as I would have thought. In that case. What, the, the definition of what that sign. You think people are saying they don't want LED message signs. Anywhere other than the municipality and the school?
I wouldn't be surprised. That they would vote that way, yeah.
Yeah. You may be right.
I mean, one of the problems is that you. I don't know how you limit them, I mean, it's kind of like uh liquor licenses. You know, say, say you decide that churches and nonprofits are allowed to have certain size, you know, LED signs, right? And you think, oh, well, we've only got two churches and one nonprofit in town, but. If you drive, if you drive around, especially, we go to Florida in the winter, and there's a church. Every half mile, you know, some of them look like uh. They were formerly gas stations, and some of them look like single family homes. And likewise with nonprofits, they're all over the place, so. You know.
Yeah, we could get a church at the mall.
Uh huh, yeah. Somebody give a church in their house, which is kind of what goes on down in Florida. And then, do you want them to be allowed to? You know, what, what do you want to allow them for signs?
Well, if we're simply talking about. Signs, and, and we're not. Talking specifically about LED signs.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking. That we would have. Classes, so. Say municipals were a class. Other commercial businesses a class. Temporary, and you know, maybe one other. We go down the whole list, you know, all the rest of the stuff that's on this page. And decide what we want to allow, what we don't, so when we're doing the municipal one. Presumably, we're gonna allow some types of LED signs, when we move on to the next class. Which is other commercial business. We're probably not gonna allow that, right? It's probably gonna. That one's probably gonna be more like what we have today with the limit on size and illumination and all those things.
Right. So if a municipality has a sign that isn't. An LED sign, does it live within the same regs that the other commercial businesses live in?
It could.
I guess that's the position I was taking is. And, and I think what you're saying is that the only. LED use that we might start with and allow would be municipal.
I think we'd have the best chance of getting. That passed at a town meeting from the discussions I've had with people, yeah. I think it's kind of, because I think. Most people are afraid of what Caroline, Caroline was talking about, which is. You know, what you see in Hudson and a few other places where it's flashing and. Colored and. Obnoxious, right, that's kind of the initial viewpoint most people you talk to have. And you have to bring them around to, to know, we're talking about something that's attractive, that's not too bright, that's not. You know, black and white, it's all, it's all things that make it more, you know, compatible with town. And then I think y'all still gotta kind of limit the number. You know, it's not one, maybe it's two, but it's no more than that. And kind of get everybody on board with that.
Right, so one at the school and one for um. For the town to. List town events, town news, whatever, however, and I think it's somewhere in here how you worded it.
Yeah, I had kind of an initial list for us to talk about it, what my content. Long list, look at that.
There it is, yeah.
Yeah. I think there are, there are a lot of things that would. Yeah, we'd have no trouble keeping the sign busy, you know, even the temporary one that's in the center of town gets. Fair amount of interesting content. I mean, I think the split. I think splitting out municipal and putting limits on it, but having it. Allow LED. And everything else is not. Is probably what people want. Um, and then do we, for the everything else, do we want to split that up? Is it all other signs, or do we want to break it up into? More detail, like some of these choices. Here, you know, do we want to separate churches and nonprofits from commercial business? In particular. Just means, you know, we'd have three parts to the bylaw.
And what would be, what are you foreseeing, let's just take nonprofits versus commercial? Would one of them be allowed to have bigger signs than the other? Like, what would, what would be the differences that would necessitate them being separate categories?
See, I, I personally am not sure. There needs to be a distinction between the two of those. But, you know, Thomas proposed that. I don't know how you guys, if you guys have weighed in on it.
Right, well, I think we should.
I think he was driving that he wanted something that was easy to change the copy on. Uh, and if it was a church or if it was a nonprofit. Then maybe he was angling for, you know, possibly an LED or something that was easy to convert the copy. And if you have a category separated, then it's an easier case to make. That churches and, you know, nonprofits should have. The access to LEDs and the commercial people don't.
Why?
Have two different copy, you already have two different categories.
No, wha- wha- what would the reason for that be?
Churches.
His argument was is that, you know, they need, need to be able to manipulate the copy more frequently than, say, a business.
Right, that they have weekly events or monthly events. That, that they would need to be able to change their sign more often.
Correct.
And.
So then do we distinguish instead of nonprofits and commercial, do we distinguish informational versus advertising?
You're, you're, you're gonna allow them to do LEDs?
Um, so if it's like. And, and I'm not saying that this is, uh, that I'm for or against this, just that i- if you had a category that was um. You know, informational.
Yeah.
Then that would, you could at least argue the need for LEDs. As opposed to, um. I don't, advertising isn't exactly the right word, but, you know, the name of your business, that static.
For instance, for instance, Robinson's Hardware.
Right.
They have a LED.
Yep. That Krell thing.
Oh my goodness, it just. You know, blinds you when you come down Washington Street at night.
Yep.
And they do all the stuff, not all, but they do a lot of the stuff that they, they carry, Carhartt and Pittsburgh paints and, you know, all kinds of different things. That they march across there, and uh. That's a business, do they need to advertise the various things that they sell? Who knows? But I can see where a business would argue that they need that. Or desire that.
Yeah, I don't, I know you could say that a church has more of a need for that than a business, it might be the other way around, really.
Yeah, I mean, let's.
Open seven day week, or five days a week.
Or I'm the, the gas station that um, does inspections and I have a. Informational notice that says, you know, your May inspection sticker is due now, you know, that's. When does it become public information as opposed to an ad, you know?
Right.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, totally.
I was kind of thinking that we could. If we're willing to make a change, see how it goes, change it again. You know, kind of walk it forward as we find public opinion.
Right.
That we might try to just. Provide, I mean, update our, our bylaw. Where it's needed, but then also try to provide this kind of new category for municipal signs that can be LED.
Right, I think that makes sense.
And, because we got a lot of control over that, right, we got less control over businesses and other entities. And because we got a lot of control over that, right? We got less control over businesses and other entities. And if we did, everybody's comfortable with it, you know, maybe another year later. We got people, businesses and churches coming to us and saying, hey, we want that too, and maybe we consider. You know, making another step in that direction. Kind of get the. Just get started by trying to do. You know, a couple of. Town related ones.
Well, one thing is, is if we take too big of a bite at the apple, I think that people would usually be like, if we make this really complicated. They're going to be like, ah, and vote no. Because they're not going to want to spend the time to, you know, dig into it and figure out what we're trying to do.
Well, and if we left the. If we made only a few changes to our existing bylaw. So they didn't have to get read through and learn all about that.
Right.
And then. The new one, you know, the new municipal one. Not go crazy with it, but try to address their concerns, and I think their concerns are the things we're talking about, brightness, color, motion. You know. Try to hit.
Which, which do you, how do you, so let's start back, let's, let's peel this back a little bit. What, what, other than the LED part of it, which I know we were trying to solve for the school and for the town. What other issues have we heard from people about signage? Anybody really complaining about size or I can't have what I want or? I don't recall that we have a lot of. You know, angst amongst the people that have to live within this bylaw.
Well, the Solomon Pond sign that we just.
Yes.
Did.
Yeah.
That was, that was kind of municipal, right? I don't know if we're going to say.
We deemed it as municipal.
Yeah.
Some of us did.
The majority deemed it.
I'll give you that.
Um, so uh, 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 let's see, if we, if we go that route, Jay, and. If the, if the majority of the bylaw as it exists now, people can live within. Then maybe we just work on the sections that we want to. And maybe that's the lightning rod we don't want to touch, but that we work on those sections and, you know. Pair it down a little bit so that people can understand it, get their teeth behind it and figure out that they want to pass it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yep.
Instead of trying to solve for a whole bunch of things and.
Right, instead of rewriting the whole thing.
Exactly.
I mean, the building inspector doesn't come to us very often and say, I'm really having a problem understanding what to tell someone they can do or not do.
Right.
We've got the off premise sign. Part that seems to be functioning. The, the, the mall packages. Are sort of standalone and they come and. Usually work through with us what they need to do. Um, there are some signs right now. That are not allowed, for instance, at the. At the apartments, they've got those flags, you know, the feathery type flag.
Yeah. Yeah.
And, and I think at Riverbridge at the cafe, they've got an abundance of signs that probably exceeds. The intent of the bylaw, I mean, I, I don't know, is we've got a, a number of. But I, I don't believe they've probably got. Permits for all the signs they've put up. Um, and there may be some other situations in town where people have. Done something similar. But by and large, people are pretty good, I think.
So do we want to address the, those flag things?
Well, we have them, right?
I, I believe they're not allowed.
I think we don't allow them already.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we want to? Add language, do we want to? Do we want to allow them? And. You know, no more than two or, or just keep them not allowed and. I don't know. I don't know that I have strong feelings one way or another, I'm just throwing it out.
I mean, I'd be inclined to say that they're not necessary, but. And they're. They're in excess of. What? We intended.
Right.
So right now they're not allowed, so if somebody complained, the building inspector could step in and say, you got to remove them.
Yeah.
I think one change we could make to the existing. Uh, bylaw. Would be what we were talking about with dark sky. So I don't think we have. Actually, I'm not sure if we have hours of elimination in, in the bylaw today or not.
Right, well, I think any LED language that we add, we reference. The dark sky regs. Whether we call it best practices or um, recommendations or whatever. That way, as those evolve. The, um, the, the bylaw evolves.
We might. Yes, for LEDs, I agree, but, but we might also add to the existing bylaw for non LED signs. Um, a little better definition. Of nighttime illumination. We did have one complaint.
All about that.
National lumber put up a whole bunch of, they're actually LED, but they're. You know, spotlights all around the building.
Yes.
Really bright for the. Need, right?
Yep.
And we might want to. Have some limit on lumens and how often, you know, what time of day and.
Right, well, and I think the color temperature makes a big difference too.
Yeah, I think so.
Um, I know that environmentally, that the color temperature is the part that. Um, a lot of people are focusing on.
Um, interesting.
And, and you know, so I would absolutely have no problem. Regulating the color temperature. And the lumens.
Yeah. Yeah, we just figured out how to do it, because how do you measure it and what?
We have, signs shall be illuminated only with steady stationary shielded external light sources directed solely on the sign without causing glare. And we also say no sign shall be illuminated between the hours of nine and nine PM and six AM. The premise. On which it is located is open for business.
Okay.
So.
And are those rules different per Highland Commons? Like, is there?
Yeah, they are, because they were, they were part of the development.
The overlay. Right.
Yeah, I wonder what we. That though, where is that?
So Jay, in your. Aren't the um, hexagon and triangle ones already? There was something about.
Yeah, the, the stops, the one looks like stop sign and one that looks like a yield sign or outlaw.
Right.
By law. I think you want to continue that, right?
Personally, yes.
I don't know what other shapes there might be.
Well, it, it, I. That's a hard thing. Because you could, somebody who is really particular could say, oh, that's an oval, not a circle. Oh, that's an oval with uh, the letters, you know, carved specifically or whatever.
At the Molten Borough Town Dump. They label all the different areas we can throw their trash with. Signs um, with Disney characters on them.
Uh, for anybody that wants to know, the um, in the overlay, we have illumination of the signs. Um, they have to be one half hour after closing of the establishment. And one half hour before the opening of the establishment, they have to be dark.
They are not. Been plenty of times when I've come home. After the, after the mall is closed and see the BJ sign staring up at me. And what about the um, parking lot lights? Oh, but that's not signs, that's a, yeah, yeah.
Going to be different.
What do the current rules say about? The, so Jay, you have that location category.
Yeah. Not sure. Yeah, what does it say? There's a section about that. Says you cannot put a sign on a fence, utility pole or structure. Or tree, shrub, rock or other natural.
Right, but that's the mounting, what about your section above that lo- says location?
Mounted on roofs. Or extend above the roof line, unless mounted on a parapet wall. Which extends above the roof line, in which cases I may not. Extend above that. I guess it has to be on the building, not on the roof. And not above sixteen feet. I'm not covering architectural details.
Relationship to parking lot, distance to roadway.
Provisioned distance for roadway, has to be like twelve feet.
It says here, no sign shall be placed less than seven feet from. Of a roadway. Or abutting lot lines unless attached to a building. We have that here. Distance to roadway currently. Seven feet. Doesn't say anything about parking lots. As you're reading through this, do you find for the, for the non municipal, so for the existing? Class. Are you finding anything that you want to change or? Are we getting, are we seeing things that we're pretty much okay with?
I'm, I, I'm, you know, for me. There's nobody that's jumping up and down hall or and they say can't live with any of these sections, so I, I'm. Comfortable with everything that's in that bylaw.
Yeah, okay. And the illumination, um. We don't like the. Cheesy backlit uh, blow molded signs. At River Bridge. But those are actually allowed in the current bylaw, right? Or are they not?
I wouldn't say they're allowed in the current bylaw. Or we, we, they came in and. Brought in some guy and gave us a long story about how. It was. Less harmful to. The environment to have that type of sign and that was the. Direction signage was going and, and we said, let's experiment, but.
I see.
I'm glad we experimented because it's convinced me that that particular type of sign doesn't work at all.
Yeah. Yes, because now it says. Illuminated only with steady stationary shielded external light source directed on the sign.
Right.
No strings of bulbs. And hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we can just leave that, I guess. So.
I have, I have to talk to Richard Hanks about some other stuff, I can certainly say. Has he? Run into problems with people that are. Trying to. Put up a sign that can't be accommodated by our bylaw, you know, I. There aren't too many instances, but. I can, I'll ask him.
Better do it quick.
Yep, well, that's my goal, I have to talk to him quick about a couple of things, so.
I see, I think he's sticking around till August, at least maybe later.
Yeah, it's pretty much the end of the month, I think.
Well, why don't we move on then, if we got a few minutes and. Talk about the new class, which is going to be the municipal. And are we defining municipal as? Town and schools, how do we define it? It's, what is municipal?
Anything owned by the town.
Hey.
Yeah.
Does that leave anybody out or bring anybody in that? Doesn't belong?
Let's think about we, our sign, you got the old, old um, town hall. You got the municipal offices, you got the highway department, you got the school, you got the.
Library.
Library.
Transfer station.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
All the stuff Rex doing. All the stuff conservation's doing. Those pesky people.
Old, the old um, fire station on sixty-two. You got the old town barn that's on. Um.
Cotta Street.
Carter, thank you, Carter Street.
Yep, the West School.
I mean, with anybody objective, they threw signs all over those.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially LEDs.
There's no reason for it, but we've got to make. There's no reason for it, but we've got to make sure we. Put this into. Text that. Make sure people understand it's not not allowed, right?
Right, really nearly.
I like the idea of putting the number.
Right, uh Tom Lynn has her hand up.
I saw that uh Lynn, Lynn, can you um illuminate us with what you want to say?
Just one suggestion, when you talk about. Um the. Municipal sign, I would put up when authorized by the select board.
So that gives another trigger.
Right. In other words.
Is that the body we want to make that?
I was gonna say.
Yeah.
I don't know, you you could pick anything, but um. I'm just thinking you've mentioned, you know, what if the rec wanted to put up a scoreboard, you know, I just.
Yep.
Um. There's so many uses that maybe you need to be funneled through somebody.
Yeah.
Maybe you folks.
Maybe you.
Oh, please.
Well, we we've been the. Entity that approves signs. For a long time.
Well, I think currently the town pretty much does what it wants to as far as signs go, you know, I mean the. Um highway department or. You know, the town hall or whatever. For the signs that are normally allowed. But I think when you get into the LED, it should be. And even under municipal signs, it should say when authorized by whatever. Whomever. And with the LED, again, when authorized by whomever.
And maybe we make that even a stronger body. A committee made up of multiple people.
Oh, Tom, just what we need, another committee.
I know, right?
Well, I mean, you take, you take, I understand what you're saying, but at least you take the. The granting authority out of just one body's hand, so you don't have. Somebody's with their nose out of joint saying, well, you know, they had an agenda or whatever.
They're not gonna say that anyway.
I know, I know, I know.
Right, but it's actually not a bad idea in that it it well.
But something is 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 as contentious as LEDs.
Well, what about Jay's notion that we just put a a number on it?
We could do that, too.
Well, just allow one at the school. That's the only one that's chomping at the bit.
No, somebody bit to put one in the town center.
Yeah, Jay.
No, but it's only you, Jay.
Well, we already have one Eloise, and I. Think it's, I think it's a really good idea, but I think it's incredibly ugly and like replaced with something more attractive. And Carolyn's gonna make sure we can use that piece of land, even though.
I mean, you could, what if you just said the school, this this the school can have one and the town can have one and that's. Calling it that for a while, like you say. And you know, you use that as an approach for a couple of years, and if if it reapproves unsatisfactory, you address it then.
The problem with that, Tim, is that when we were looking into the sign for the school. Where they want to put it is not on school property.
Well, we can define it in a way that. Maybe in the vicinity of the school, I'd say. Because I I I remember that became a big issue, but I don't know why, you know.
Right, I think the select board. Allowed it. You know, that it was on town property and that the select board was like, yeah, it's fine.
Right.
Yeah.
That makes me happy. See me?
I'm thinking what we do is. We keep the bylaw we have with minor changes, and then we have a new section we add that's about LED signs, about that. Right, how it's gonna say it's only for municipal use, there's only two. And then whatever else we, you know, whatever other restrictions we want to put on it.
Mm hmm.
I make it easy. And take all the stuff out. Do we want to limit? Do we want to say anything about dimensions?
About what?
About the dimensions.
Yes. My gosh.
We definitely, if it's LEDs, we want to eliminate the limit, the the size. The uh construction standards, the illumination, you know, hours of operation, all of that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are in the news tonight. Renovations happening at um. Gillette Stadium. Their new LED sign, their Jumbotron or whatever the heck they're calling it. Is a half acre in size.
Twenty three thousand, twenty twenty three thousand square feet.
He threw up a little bit.
Twenty three thousand square feet.
Jesus, Mary and Joseph.
Yeah, it's enormous.
It's gonna light up the whole town of uh.
A half.
Faces in, it faces into the stadium, but.
It's still gonna the glow from that now granted.
See the glow, absolutely.
Yeah. It will.
You see the glow anyways.
For certain times, right?
Yeah.
Right, and it's not like the lights don't illuminate the whole sky anyway.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
So it's like two hundred by a hundred plus, I mean, bigger than that, but basically two hundred by a hundred.
Yeah.
It's the size of one of my riding arenas.
Yeah.
It's insane.
So do we want to guess at a? Square foot. Height with limit on the two signs.
Twenty three thousand square feet, didn't you just say that?
Yeah.
They have to be.
There used to be a church here somewhere.
Yeah, right?
Where's the school?
Follow the glow.
Yeah, they have to be large enough that they're readable, that's. You know. The one I showed you, that showed you the picture of.
Right.
I should go measure that. I'm guessing that's.
Like two by four or something?
No, by eight, I bet it's eight feet wide at least.
Look like four by eight.
I'm trying to remember, maybe I can go measure it and we could. Think about.
Right, well, the school one doesn't need to be that big. True?
Um, I don't know, I it is, it's gonna be multiple events that you wanna let people know about. Especially sports. But also, you know, school.
I still don't think it needs to be the size of a sheet of plywood.
You want to be able to read it while you're driving by without slowing down and stopping on the side of the road in front of Thomas Thomas's house and all that, you know. Probably. We might want to get some recommendations from people that stall them. It's gonna be trade off of cost also, because the bigger, yes, the cost is very proportional with size. And the resolution you want.
Does anybody remember the size they were asking, the school was asking for before?
No, I don't know. They told, yeah, they must have told us, they might have the drawings, I don't know.
Yeah, they did, they are.
We'll put TBD.
Right, because the LED portion of the sign doesn't have to be that big either. It could be.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we want to really want to restrict the size of the supports for it, because we want it to be attractive.
No, not the supports, you know, there there are lots of those kinds of signs where. You've got the whole rectangle, but only part of it is LED.
Right. True. I don't know if I would want to limit the 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 rest of it, I'd like to see. Uh some designers bring us a bunch of. You know, concepts to look at. But I think we should set some specs for the um size of the LED part of it. And then there's a number of sides, is it okay if it's? Viewable from both sides. Are we gonna discriminate against people on one side of the town versus the other?
Only people who drive west.
Or so we put it on that little patch of conservation land, you can only see one side of it.
Right.
And really, only people driving out of town will be able to see it.
Yeah, that's the problem. If you're only gonna have one, there're gonna be a lot of people who never see it, because they don't go to the center town. But I don't know what you do about that. I don't. I think just from a cost standpoint, I think we're gonna have a hard time getting support for more than two. Because they're not cheap. They gotta have. Temperature control inside them and. Stuff.
Weatherproofed and. Yep.
Right, because when they're sitting there in the hot sun and the lights are all on.
Yep.
It's a lot of heat, you gotta get rid of it, they burn up.
Yep. They have to be full sun rated. Which means they need the internal cooling system and. Yep.
Yeah. So there's number sides to, okay? Up to two. No more than two.
No more than two.
In the location. I don't know, do we need to specify that because we're gonna be approving them? We have set that some kind of approval of the. The site as well as the actual sign. Could have the seven feet from the roadway. Like that.
That makes it even harder to put it in the garden. Because then it's in the garden.
Hmm. Well, seven feet's not very far from road. You gotta be able to plow.
Yeah.
So it's probably reasonable. But all this stuff doesn't matter anymore here. Mounting, do we just want some to see a design, or do we want to put any bounds on it before somebody start designing?
Architecturally attractive. There's a can of worms for you.
We could say we want to mount it on the ground, as opposed to on a building. So I guess it's kind of obvious.
Well, both of those locations would have to be crown mounted.
Yeah.
Right.
Illumination's gonna be LED.
I I I do think that we should try to think of a different location in the center of town.
Really, why?
Well, we can, we've discussed this a couple of times, there is a conservation restriction on that property. That may specifically say no signs.
Hmm.
And Sudbury Valley Trustees coholds that. Um conservation restriction with the town, so anything that's done on that property will have to pass their approval as well.
Yeah, but could they approve it if they wanted to?
If the CR allows it, sure.
Oh, but if it does not, they can't modify it.
Correct. Uh the only way you can modify a conservation restriction is. At the state level. And that is a vote by the state body, the reps and the senators.
Does that?
Has to pass by two thirds. Good luck.
Yeah. It just seems that's a great location, and I'm not sure what other great location. There is.
Well, there there are the other sides of the property, I mean, maybe. Maybe we rent. Ten square feet from Jane. You know, on the other side and um. You know, a hundred year lease or something, I. I mean, there there is other land in town that something might be able to in this along that piece of. Roadway that may, something may be able to be worked out.
Hundred year, hundred year lease from the church?
Right. With, and they get to put two things a month on it or something, you know, like, I don't know.
Would, but would the sign replace the Lions Club sign?
Great, it could go there. I mean, how is that prop, that sign, what's the the um agreement? Who even owns that property?
To be something with Jane, right?
I would imagine, yeah.
Unless it's all on town property.
Is that town property right there?
I don't know how much the taking is.
True.
But your sign is gonna be seven feet back from the roadway.
Yeah, but the taking for that road may be. Far enough onto Jane's. That that Lions Club. Huh. I see Jane at the post office quite a bit, and I can. Ask her who who, you know, is that sign on her land or is it on town land?
Yeah.
Right. And is she open to a hundred year lease?
Because that sign exceeds, that sign exceeds the size requirements.
Did that predate this zoning by law?
No.
No.
No, that would Lions.
A little wary of um uh. Kind of encumbering land that. We might, you know, we as a town might. Choose to use for another purpose when we start planning what we what we want the town center to. Look like in the future. You know, I like the the conservation plot because there's really nothing else that. We would ever do with that, you know, we're not gonna put housing or. Businesses or anything on it, whereas um. The property we're talking about. Might be a candidate for. Something we want to do. Later.
I'm just saying that the. It may not be as easy as just convincing the conservation commission to put it there.
Yeah, no, I understand that, it's, we need to have a plan B, because it's not like, it seems unlikely to get it, but it'd be nice if it could. You know, if there's another place like that that we know. Is never gonna be called upon for another purpose, like in front of the church, for example, I mean, assume that's never gonna change, right? It's just not as, you know, your cars parked in front of it and. It's not.
Right.
Put on Jane's front lawn, maybe she'll. Rent a space. Like having a cell phone, cellphone tower on your property, you know, you get a payment every year.
Right? Three dollars.
How about content as we're running out of time, oh, nine o'clock, we're supposed to be adjourning, but. Do we want to just make it simple and say only black and white? Or do we want to allow dayglo? Or, you know.
Are there any other choices? Right, no, I think I think we allow color, but within the confines of the color, temperature, and lumens. That we talked about.
We love multi color?
Well, certainly more than one. Well, certainly more than one. Yeah, because I think if, if you tone down the brightness. And the harshness. Then the. Then the number of colors don't matter quite as much. I mean, I could be, I could be wrong about that, but.
Best practices.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right.
Yep. You're gonna allow graphics? Pictures of them.
I'd prefer not. What'd you say, Tim?
No.
Yeah.
Videos.
No.
Replay town meeting, the highlights of town meeting, then I.
Absolutely not, absolutely not, that's what, that's, that's why God invented YouTube, you want to watch that stuff, go to YouTube. Don't be watching it while you're driving down the street.
Moving parts, we could have a swing to get your attention.
Nope. No. Words. Informational only.
All right, well, I think we should save this part, which is gonna be. An interesting conversation for next time. Since we're at nine oh six, what do you think, Mr. Chairman?
That's fine by me.
You can all do your homework and think about this before.
Nice, nice job, Jay, that's good.
Thank you, nice progress, you guys.
Yeah.
I'll put some, I'll put this in the minutes, and then we can continue, next time we have an opportunity.
Cool. Are you looking for a motion?
Is there any other? Timely items that we need to discuss, or? Are we good? I don't see any other, uh. People going crazy.
Yeah, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, no discussions allowed, I'll ask you to vote, Carol McDonald.
Yes, sir.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye, aye.
Jay Teach.
Aye.
Tom Sanford, aye.